Way better. We can have it outside.
Yeah.
She pretty much drags me around.
She's back to normal.
Good, good. Glad to hear that.
Okay, I would call the meeting to order for the Hermosa Town Board Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Roll call. Ferguson.
Here.
Henrickson here. Halsworth.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Thank you all for coming. I'd like to say special thanks to the public and to the Board of Trustees for being here. Additionally, I want to thank Gail, our Finance Officer Jill, our P&amp;Z Director and Office Administrator Assistant Chuck, who is a bit under the weather, and Mitch Johnson, our Attorney. Your dedication is truly, truly appreciated. Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please stand. Dan Anthony, I'm sorry. It's been a day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two, call for changes. Review of current agenda items. We have lots of changes. First would be to move engineer from item 10 to item 6. Which would mean Planning and Zoning becomes item 8. Claims stay item 7. Law Enforcement changes from 8 to 9. Legal changes from 9 to 10. Additionally, we want to add Hermosa Newsletter to New Business.
It's in there.
Yep. I just, I haven't... Well, you know what I did today, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's there.
Add item 8D, which is the article. Issue for $163,000. Yes, ma'am.
I have that under my.
Okay, you have that on there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so you don't need that. All right. Add the Discussion of District Meeting in Hill City under New Business. 14I.
Did you want the Newsletter under New Business?
It, it is. Add Hermosa Town Cleanup as item... J.
Under New Business.
Okay.
Taking all my items.
Add Volunteer of the Year as 14K. This goes on and on, so bear with. Take item 3C to Executive Session. Item 10C to Executive Session.
And C?
Yes, sir.
And D?
And item 10D. Item 12A to Executive Session. Move item 14B, the Metering and Technology Solutions, to a Work Session.
Trying to take shorthand. I'm trying to go slow. I know.
You think this was, you know, took all day. And move to the Task List, items 13A, B, C, and D.
You were going to move the officer appointments and reassignment.
Oh, that's right.
Under New Business.
Yeah, I've got that over here. Okay, move item 14E, F, and G, which is the Appointment of Officers and the Bank Issues, to item 3D, E, and F. I think that's it, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
If I can remember what I did.
So 13, you're doing what to... Work Session or?
To Task List.
And there were which ones?
13A, B, C, and D.
Not B. That's when also connects.
That's correct. I'm sorry. A, B, D, and E.
A, C, and D.
Oh, sorry, yeah. I got, I wrote it wrong.
Yep.
It got very confusing this afternoon.
Which ones?
A, C, and D.
A, C, D, and E.
Oh, E.
A, B, D, and E.
I, I moved to, what did you say?
A, C, D, and E.
To a task, the Task List?
Task List.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay.
Is that it?
I hope so.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? Dan?
Um, why did trustee input go off of the agenda?
Because it is not required.
I understand, but that was...
I, it, to me, it became an issue of personal, more personal than business, and it should stay business, and that's where part of our problem fell. And when I checked, it was not required, and I removed it.
Correct. I just always knew that you guys were totally on transparency and allowing fairness and equalness, so that's why I wondered.
But that's not what was becoming of the subject.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm glad you asked. I have to figure out where I'm at.
Call for the vote.
Oh, uh, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
May.
Okay. Motion carried. Special Items, Meeting Protocol. As Chair, I control the floor, and I will intervene every time a board member is disrespectful, degrading, or accusatory of any other board member, contractor, official, public member. I will take the floor back and point out the misbehavior. If the behavior continues, I will take back the floor, and I will not recognize that board member during the rest of the business at hand. If the behavior continues to another agenda item, I will take back the floor and request a motion to censure the board member by name. Board members will raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair before talking. Each board member will be allowed to speak twice on one motion, on each motion, but only after all other board members who wish to speak have had their chance to do so. Board members will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Public members will be allowed to comment once on each agenda item after board discussion has ended and just before the call for vote. I request all board members to either turn off their phones or place them on silent mode at this time. We moved item... 3C to Executive Session. Item 3D is to do appointments. I need a motion for nomination for President and Vice President. And/or, one or the other.
I would make the motion to make Vicki the President.
Second?
I second that.
I could need to quote right here. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
May.
Motion carried. Motion for Vice President?
I make a motion to have Linda stay as Vice President.
I would second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Reassignment of committees. Do I need a motion and a second on that? Or just list them?
Oh, golly, I don't remember. Um, Mitch, can you help me on that?
Just assign, isn't it?
Just assign them? Committees, okay.
Okay, Finance, Henrickson Chair, Kramer Vice Chair. Water Chair, Henrickson, Vice Chair Kramer. Sewer Chair, Linda. Vice Chair Vicki, Streets, Linda. Vice Chair Ferguson. Law Enforcement, Ferguson, Vice Chair Henrickson. We have Commissioner Liaison. Linda has said she would take over with that. Donna said she would be an alternate. I greatly appreciate that because that's a Wednesday morning thing in additional time, so thank you very much, ladies. Conflict of Interest, correct?
You're, you're good. You have a consent calendar.
Item 4, Consent Calendar. Approval to amend, February 15. Nope, 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 nope. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's been...
Why did I put that there?
That's because it goes there.
Mm-hmm, whatever. No, I've lost it.
Right here.
Item 8, okay. Item E, 2024 Officer Reappointment, we just did, Committees. Pioneer Bank and Trust, Approval to Add Vice President to Signature Card. I would like a motion, please.
I make a motion, we add the Vice President, Linda, to the Signature Card at Pioneer.
Second? I'll second it. All those in favor, or discussion, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve to remove Stiles from Signature Card. Do I have a motion made by?
I make a motion.
Second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? Dan?
Are you also going to remove him from the emails and all of that?
I already have.
Thank you.
It's been done. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Consent Calendar. Yes, sir.
Did you move, I thought, officer reappointments? I guess I misunderstood. I thought you were going to ask for appointments for the vacant spot, too. You're not advertising that?
We haven't done anything about it.
Okay.
Okay. No one has come in. Yes, ma'am.
Could we put that on the agenda for next?
Absolutely.
Meeting to have anybody that is interested put in a letter of intent, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dan?
I would like, maybe we could advertise it now and then see what we have for interest for next meeting.
And then maybe we'd be done next meeting.
That's fine. You okay with that, Donna?
Yeah.
Gail? Can we do that without it being on the agenda?
I don't want to ask the tough questions.
That's why you get the big bucks.
I think it's fine. We need to get a fifth member in the board, so sooner you fill that vacancy, the better, I think.
We missed that. Sorry.
It's okay. We didn't... Can you...
The actual act of appointing someone is the critical one. That's what needs to be on the agenda.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, thanks.
So we need a motion? Motion to advertise the vacancy? No?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
We, we don't need to make a motion to advertise that, do we? We can just do it?
Just do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Item 4, Consent Calendar. Approval to amend, February 15, 2022, Beotin. Meetings as presented. I'd like a motion, please? I make that motion? No?
That's the one that we talked about, we discussed about.
That's what we did?
We just need to remove it.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, please.
You were going to remove it as the, as minutes, but you were going to discuss it as what Danar expects us to do.
Oh, that's right.
You were gonna...
This has been a long day. Minutes from Danar requested were for February 15, 2022, specifically requesting citizen comment and requested to know how the comments were addressed. These documents are required by DNR to proceed with Lagoon Expansion Project. Any further discussion? Dan?
So... In discussion, then what exactly are you thinking of presenting?
Gail?
Because we had state requirements that we had everything in in our application, right?
Gail?
That's, that's exactly what the three of us discussed, to just give them those comments. We don't have to amend the minutes. The minutes aren't going to be amended. We're just going to give them that list of comments, how they were recognized, and so that they see that they were recognized, they were answered, and that's what we decided to do. Not put them in as an amended minutes, just send them those comments. Yeah.
So did you ask Jennifer about that? Because that was something where she had kind of specifically said in hers that well, she was doing was saying there were six citizens at the meeting. That was it. Nothing else further, and if they needed any more than they did today.
I got it from Abby, that she wants to know what we did to recognize the comments from the public people.
Oh, they were handled.
It wasn't that, it wasn't that there was five people in the audience. She wanted to specifically know what we did to address those comments.
Mrs. Ferguson?
That's, that's from DNR. That's not from Jennifer.
Uh-huh.
I have a question. What is, what seems to be the problem of sending these comments in? Why don't we just send them in? They're asking for them, and we are supposed to send them, so what's the problem with just sending them in?
Well, in my opinion, also, they're public. They've already been out there. They're, they're on our recording, so I don't see what the issue is. Dan, did you have further?
Yes, I just, the only thing was, is the way it was listed then, that you're putting in non-resident to resident as far as comments.
There was only non-resident. There was only non-resident.
Wait, 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 wait. I think that it's of no consequence, as long as the, I mean, they can listen to the recording if they want to, and in my opinion, that should be put in the letter or the email to them that this is, this is what was said in the meeting, and if it's exactly what is said, word by word, I, I just think that it should be sent to them and be done with them.
I agree wholeheartedly.
I agree with that.
Anything further?
I would make a motion to remove item 8.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 4B, Approval of February 6, 2024, Regular Meeting, and February 8, 2024, Special Meeting. First thing is, it was listed as a regular meeting for February 8, not special. That would be one change that needs to be acknowledged.
Thank you. I would make a motion to that amendment and approval of both.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Did you say aye, Donna?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Okay. Conflict of Interest Declaration. Board members are responsible to refrain from discussion and voting issues that they have a conflict with. Item 6.
Just item D for me.
I'm sorry?
Item D.
He has a conflict.
7D.
Okay.
8B or D? Not the numbers.
He just has a conflict, I don't know.
Oh. I'm still not catching what you're saying.
It's okay. He's, he's just declaring that he had a, he has a conflict with item, with an item.
Okay. Item 6. Anthony, four is yours.
This is for you.
Thank you.
Okay. I got a little, not Mitch. Share with me.
Yes.
So just this little visual, visual aid to explain what we've been doing for the last couple of months to get the Lagoon Expansion Project out to bid, so... With all the clearances that DNR needs you to check through as you get out the environmental review and their full review, one of them is that we, because we're building in the floodplain of the Battle Creek, we need to go through FEMA, I think it was called a Conditional Letter of Map Revision. Our existing lagoons have a Letter of Map Revision, so we had to use the model from the year that was done, which was 2014, and put in our design next to it, and then come up with how that affects the floodplain in the model, and then determine that we're not going to have an issue with the floodwaters breaching the berm, or that it's going to cause other issues in the entire floodplain. And DNR requires, because it's funded by the DNR, they require a Conditional Letter of Map Revision before construction starts. And so that's basically the same thing as a Letter of Map Provision. We actually have to go through both. So we'll go through the one ahead of time, letting them know that everything's going to be okay, and then after construction, by topographic survey, we get a Letter of Map Revision, which gets recorded by FEMA, and there, away we go. So in review of that, we received, I received the model, the 2014 floodplain model from Almer Claycomb, like, it was actually Thanksgiving Day. I stopped at his house in Ferber and picked it up, but he let me know after the holidays that he may have altered that model in doing his work on floodplain analysis. So I was about to submit everything to FEMA in January, and he calls and lets me know that I might need to go get the original model from FEMA. Well, that can take weeks. So luckily, I know somebody that was at Ferber, which is now Avid Four, Dave Muck, and I called him and I said, "Do you have the original FEMA model?" So the first week of February, this, of this month, I was able to get that from Dave, and this is the results of when I ran his model. So we had a small issue we actually identified earlier, which is this picture here. So that little red box zoomed in shows how our floodline, floodway limit is just, we're just a little bit inside it. I mean, it's not drastic, so that wasn't going to meet, I can, I can adjust that to the north a little bit to fix that problem. But then, when I looked at the floodplain elevation in Exhibit B, I noticed that our, the southwest corner of our cell number one is five inches lower than what's required. It's actually six inches lower when you're on that southern berm than the actual floodwaters. So we need to be a foot above the floodplain to give enough what's called the freeboard to allow for, you know, there's variations in the model, and they can't, you can't have it right on the floodplain level.
Can you just repeat that last sentence about the southwest corner?
Yeah, so the southwest corner of Cell One, which is the, the most westerly lagoon, was...
Where the red box is, huh?
Yeah, exactly there. Also was, the berm was, was lower than what the hundred-year flood would be. So what we can't have is that the berm gets breached by floodwaters, and now we have a, you know, overflow of Cell Number One, which is actually the facultated part. That's the one that has the most treatment going on. And so you can't have any of them do that, but that would be the worst one to have it done to. So what we need to do is make that small adjustment, which, you know, to give ourselves one foot of freeboard, which isn't much, and I figured that I could probably get it done in a week's worth of work, about 40 hours worth of work. And we've done a little bit of those hours already, just to, just in discovery. And so, you know, my task order was to get the project out to bid, not do any changes to the design, and so I was willing to kind of let it go with that little corner being in the floodway and just shift it up and send it on to FEMA. But when I noticed in the model run that, that I'm also having an issue there, I need to, I need to do some, a little bit of modification to the, to the drawings. And I won't change the design at all. It'll still remain the same as it was, but I do have to make some modifications. The volumes will be all the same, but it will have to be adjusted to the north, and the berm's wide enough that it can, can still maintain that gravel driveway all the way around. So hopefully, we can get that approved and then get it into FEMA this month.
This month or March?
It would be, it would be, it would be early March. Sorry. We're already, we're already gone in February.
Yes, it's about gone, that's why I say in this month.
Hours to be able to remodel, but...
Yeah, and we have a task order which allows for additional services as per our hourly. So if you want to approve a limit not to exceed of 40 hours, then we can just move ahead with that if you want.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Sure.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Can we have a discussion first? On the task order now, part of what you have on your billing here and on your invoice, is it involved in any of this? Because we had a contract maximum of the Lagoon Expansion of $92,000. And I guess I don't know when that was approved, but...
Probably October.
And was that in the original? Well, it isn't, because all we were in is design, so this is in construction. I must not have been at that meeting or something. So then we're at the limit then with that, where you're at $10,000 out of that, and then you're going to have another 40 hours then?
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't envision having to do any civil design. We just were going to do the construction administration, bidding phase, and that's it. So I don't want to get too far away from what I had in my scope, right, without coming back to you for approval.
Right. That's why I was trying to figure out where we were at in this number. And how much we were going to pull out of that. So at 40 hours, what's that number going to be then?
So you could say safely less than $8,000.
How much?
$8,000, less than that. So limit not to exceed.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Engineering Staff Reports and Office Support. What do we have there?
Do you have any other thing to discuss, Anthony?
Uh, well, no. Engineering Staff Reports, they're as they come.
Right.
Yeah, we've been reviewing them. Initially, we had a little bit more hours just to get protocol and workflow on, but I think we've got it under control now, so... Just three or four. I don't know, those are new. Do I need to?
No, no, you're good. No, you're fine on those. I think we're, we're going to probably move those sometime.
So move three more?
Because, well, maybe not right now, but I think Vicki will probably remove those or something at a later date.
Okay.
But I think this is what you primarily were here for tonight.
Yeah, I want to get you guys into FEMA and get this thing running.
Yeah, I know. So...
Question for Anthony again.
Yes.
So in this number, then, our pumping and haul, of course, was not in that. That's all above and beyond. all above and beyond that eighty-six forty to set up the support for that?
Yeah, so a lot of that was because we'll, we'll probably need to do some pump and haul during construction, so you've now created a qualifications-based selection for that hauler, so now they're on board if you needed to have them pump and haul during the construction phase. So that kind of covers that early on, and now you have that contractor on board.
Okay. And then on that now, we had asked a question on the pumping, because we were hauling at the hot springs, are we no longer doing that? Are we able to land apply? Have we instructed him to land apply?
We, I have not gotten a response from Dan around that.
It won't be till May first.
Even though...
So, oh, excuse me.
Oh, there is some little, small provision, correct? Yes.
I asked and I have not received a response on it, to pump out of, I mean, to land apply on public, uh, excuse me, on a private land property, out of the timeframe of when we're supposed to be able to land apply. No response.
Because, I'm sorry, but my understanding was when there's no frost in the ground, as there has been in the past with us, that D A N R will allow us to go ahead and land apply. The difference in what it would save us in cost would be huge, instead of going to hot springs, we could double loads, and he has three different properties close by that he could apply to. So maybe, what my questioning was, is that maybe you could put some pressure, a little bit on him, maybe a phone call from them, and, you know, we're running over budget on this thing, we'd like to really try to bring it back into lines.
Yeah.
Can we please land apply? The contractor has a location that he's approved, has been approved over the last several years to apply on this individual's land. Like you say, instead of three loads, he'd be able to get six, maybe seven, you know, on it, so.
So what they call that, because you're under a permit, so they call that a variance to the permit, right?
Correct.
So always variances are case-by-case basis, and we can, you can make the argument that we've had some unseasonably warm weather, that is, and the frost isn't as deep or what have you, and we have some landowners that are, that are willing to accept a land application, and we can try.
Right.
I can't promise that they'll, they'll, you know, bend over backwards, but, you know, we can make the effort.
In the past, we have...
Linda, did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to ask Gail when that, that email was sent to them, asking that question. Got a guess?
Probably last week, or the week, yeah, no, last week maybe, the week before.
Oh, it hasn't been long then?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
It's been long enough, that, you know...
Well, you know, they seem to do the thirty-day thing is what I was thinking.
Nope, it has, not in the thirty days.
Hasn't been thirty days. Okay, thank you.
I guess...
Dan?
Did the letter asking for forgiveness on the fines go out to, to them?
So I have discussion on that later in my report, so...
Because I didn't know if that was something that we needed to involve Anthony in too with Hunter Roberts and...
Probably.
Well, actually, if you want to, you know, we could discuss that right now, because with Anthony here, so I did get an email from Kyle, and he wants to set up a meeting next week, a conference call meeting. He doesn't, he, he doesn't want to have to be here. So if we don't need counsel here, we can do it Monday or Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, because Anthony's schedule is okay for Tuesday. But if we need counsel, it's going to have to be Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of next week, and it's a conference call. I, I don't know if we need, they're not going to have counsel.
Oh, but if we do, then...
Then they do.
Then they do.
Yeah. Okay.
So that was on my list. Thank you for bringing that up, because with Anthony being here, that we, we can get that thing scheduled.
Yeah, and with that timeframe, if I have the land, is it Nuga Bar that would be the landowner?
More, and Milky's.
Milky. So maybe, you know, I'll get the request in for a variance in writing, but they might just take it to that meeting and address it at that time as well, you know? Because if they're going to relieve the town of fines, they might be able to relieve you of some obligations under the permit if the weather and the frost is prohibitive, not prohibitive.
Yep, which, we're in great condition and both landowners showing that they would be acceptable to do that.
So we might be able to get them to approve those two things, at least conditionally in that meeting.
So Tuesday...
Would be the fifth.
What time?
They said anytime, and Anthony sounds like he's free on Tuesday as well.
So how is the board meeting for next, next month?
Well, that would be, that's, that's, that's the board meeting, but if you do it at six, it's seven in Pierce, so that, I don't think that that's appropriate.
No.
First thing is, we need to decide, oh, excuse me, Dan, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I'd like to have us listed as a quorum, you know, when you do set the meeting up, so we could all attend.
Yeah, that's why I was going to bring it into this meeting, so that we could get everybody there. And then also, we need to know if, we need to have Mitch avail, Mitch attend.
I don't think so. I think your engineer is there, that's what we need.
Okay, so we have to do it on Tuesday.
Tuesday fifth, I'm wide open.
So it's, it's up to the board then, he's wide open, we need, we need to get it scheduled.
So what time are you thinking?
Well, if we, what, you have to go to town usually, right away in the mornings.
Well, I can't do it first thing in the morning.
Well, that's what I'm saying, he...
Ten to eleven, they are, is always...
That's not good for them, because that's lunchtime in Peter. So, one o'clock?
But just set up where they're at any time after that.
After ten AM?
Aye.
What, about two o'clock? She's working till about two.
You work until about two?
I work until about one.
Okay, so if we did two o'clock, that's three o'clock their time.
Would that work for you?
It's fine.
Does it? Okay. Two o'clock Mountain Steiner time. March fifth.
Then you'll let us know.
Of course.
I think you're going to table the two new engineering items, right?
Mm-hmm.
Unless you need the task order for those two.
What are we doing?
Yeah, you know, we're good. So Anthony is free to go now.
Right.
So now we're on the comprehensive plan.
We're just supposed to look at this? We're supposed to, the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so these are recommendations from our planners, and the, the big thing about that comprehensive plan is, is there is grant funding available, and, you know, with the limited resources of the town, we've been kind of running on the principle that you use your resources to try to use it as a match money for grants or something like that, because there's so much free money at the moment that, you know, this is an opportunity, like, for example, Rural Development has grant money to do comprehensive plans, so, but it might be a twenty percent match.
Grant.
So instead of paying a hundred percent of the cost, you can pay twenty percent and get eighty percent from USDA.
Right.
So that's kind of the principle behind it, is, you know, if you wanted us to look at a grant opportunity for, to pay for the comprehensive plan, you could tell us to do that, and we'll, we'll bring it, bring back some options for you.
You need a motion in that effect?
I think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
To allow engineers to look for a grant for comprehensive plan.
I second it. Any further discussion? Dan?
So in that grant, not to take anything away, but can it be used in-house too, if we wanted to contract with our own people that have worked with the comprehensive plan before?
Of course.
Because we used to have a P and Z board that did it always before, and so there would be monies involved, but they're local, they know what's going on, they know where we're at.
Yeah.
And that grant might be able to be applied there too, and that, and bring some of the P and Z board members in and...
Yeah, you know, you could, you could do that, you could do a combination, so that you could have, try to get as much in-house done as possible and then have a review done.
Well, and you've got to have engineering involved and other aspects of it anyway, so.
Yeah, so you could do a kind of à la carte, once you've got your grant money in place.
Joan?
So those funds could also be used to pay self, to go to municipally. I noticed that they quoted also to do the comp plan. So that may be used to pay them also?
Oh, for them to perform the counter, anybody, it could be used for anybody.
Okay, I don't know, since they are kind of already with accounts.
Yeah, the only thing would be is if, yeah, it's like you come with a coupon to the grocery store and it's already discounted, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, they might have some issue with that.
We also have a FEMA grant that will be submitted tomorrow, which is for, for three years of IT tech should be received, the grant, which would also include looking and applying with them for grants.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
How long do you think it will take to even research for that, Anthony?
I think that probably the next month's board meeting, I can give you some programs.
Okay.
I have one, one or two in mind already.
Okay.
We have a grant writing team in Bismarck, so that's all they do, four people.
Wonderful.
Anything further there?
Is there something, that was in the journal?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's great.
You need a vote.
I was going to read it at home.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I just wanted, you know, because it was in the journal.
Yeah, that's great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Did you vote?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Drive safe.
Watch the deer.
Didn't need to vote, Professor. You just got to get out at the right time.
Pending, pending that.
Item C approval for Claycomb Engineering, that is pending. I'm sorry, you guys, this is the first time going through and doing a script and all this good stuff, and it's like, kind of kicking me.
You're, you're down the next page.
Item D, was due to executive session? No?
Uh-uh.
No? What are we doing?
We...
I've been back and forth and forth and back.
So you're, you're, we just need to discuss the, to decline the ARPA grant, and that's not executive session, that's right here in, with the full board.
I never got this all finished, I apologize, you guys. Yes, ma'am.
Can I?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the grant was awarded to us by D A N N R July of 2022, and the part that, that they have to have notice by March first was the portion, the grant portion of one hundred and sixty-three thousand forty-four dollars, and it was for the Gumbo Lily Improvement Project. And that project will not be done now. We, we contacted the citizens out in that area, and the majority of them did not want to be annexed in, and so basically, that's the gist of it. And so that part of the grant, we will no longer use or need, and D A N N R just wants to know if they can spend that money elsewhere, give it to some other community that can use it. So we need to deny it properly, so that this, that's what this item is about.
Okay. Motion?
Discussion?
Do we have a motion now?
I'll make a motion, so we can have discussion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion? Yes, Dan, thank you.
Um, it's a matter where, did we send the well money back to already?
No.
No.
We don't have to. It's just this portion.
Because we, I thought in that application, we're supposed to do both, because we're not going to do the project.
No.
And when we talked to Andy Bruehl that time, he expressed not only the ARPA money, but to do the well money also, if we weren't going to move forward, because we were hoping we could use some of that into our other project, possibly the booster, possibly any of the other infrastructure, and, and they declined any of that. And of course, it's all loan, so it does us absolutely no good, so I'd like to have us put that on the agenda to send that back next meeting too.
Linda?
Um, when we talked to them about that, I asked specifically about that, and asked them that we might need more than the ARPA funds that we've gotten from Custer County for our WRT system. And so I asked if it was a possibility, if that goes over the five hundred thousand dollars, that we could use that money for that, and that's why we didn't want to totally send it back yet, or, you know, deny it. And she said that it was possible, that we needed to speak with somebody in the...
Grant.
Grant portion of that, and so we did get her number, we have not called her yet, but we don't want to totally give it away if there's a possibility of using it on, like you said, other little...
But there wasn't any ARPA funds, and now...
No, they're, you're right.
Just loan.
It's just loan. But if we need more money for the WRT project, I mean, that was estimated out two years ago for that, and we all know what's happened to the prices of things, it's skyrocketed. So if we need more money, it's possible we can use some of that loan money.
I was hoping with that article, you know, that was the big thing with that seven hundred million, was that is all for them projects, and it kind of frustrated me because of all these other small communities that received all of that ARPA money to be the best assistance, that if we could reapply, that would have been another application with Black Hills Council.
Well, I think that's all, um...
And I don't know, I don't know if we're in timeline.
I think that's all, and just in discussion, you know, we're going to have to really sit down when the engineers are done, and, you know, get all those things figured out, like, you know?
I think it might be a good idea for, call the Jennifer at Black Hills Council and ask her if there's any possibilities of being on around. I guess we need to have Anthony investigate, that should have been something we asked him, you know, and the cost issues of it right now, what we've done, and we were sixty-five percent done on the design part of it, is there room enough in that five hundred thousand still? Because there was two fifty was the booster, and the other segment of it was installation. Everything else was there, building wise and everything else, that would be a call to the company, and Anthony would be the one that would be good to call and say, this is the plan we were looking at, this is the design, are we still going to be in this number line? I think that would be well worth a call, to let us know where we're at on that, and then that lets us know if we should go to another round, or how much loan money, you know, because they were still at, at that time, two point one for their interest rate at that. So it wouldn't hurt us, but ARPA money would be so sweet.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds like a question for Anthony and for...
Maybe a call tomorrow, and he could maybe buzz them people.
I just want to make a comment. I think Mr. Halsers has his ample time over and over, this carry on.
Okay.
Point taken. My fault? Yes, ma'am.
So I walked away for a minute and kind of lost that. Are you thinking you want us to call and see if we can use any of that ARPA grant money, funds? You're talking the loan yet, right? You're talking the...
Am I allowed to speak?
Yes.
Um, it's a matter where I would say if Anthony calls... Um, it's a matter where I would say, if Anthony calls, finds out the numbers of what we've got on the WRT yet, that then you could go from there to see with Jennifer, if we say, he comes back and says it's 600,000 now. Can we go back in for another round? I know we're too late for the March round. But we're not going to get anything going before the next round, which I think is what will fall, is July, I think is when it's got to be in. So we may be able to apply in July for ARPA money and see if Jennifer is up for that.
Okay.
And if Anthony is, rather than losing loan, that maybe we'd have a pretty good shot of going in. New engineer, new face, new everything, and we might be pretty good, because they got to use this ARPA money up. And that's what they said with the Missouri River in there burning a bunch, but they're still going to have 100 million, 94 million that they have to be rid of, or it goes to other states.
Okay, I'll call him tomorrow.
Thank you.
You need to vote on the declining the. There's a, there's a motion on the.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Claims?
Claims. Okay, so you see on your agenda that I did sent you out all the information on KLJ's claim that we should have approved at the last, in the February 8th meeting? Did you all get that in your email? Okay, so first thing is, we want to approve that claim, because that's separate from the claims from February 20th.
I'll make the motions.
Have a second, please.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Dan?
The hardest part is if we can get the use of that buying money back to help any engineering or anything in the project, or the pumping, I mean, that would be a greatly appreciated situation.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Review of payroll and claims. Motion to approve has presented or amended. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to pay the claims, approve the claims.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Okay. Planning and zoning. Permit number 2024-05, permit to work in Ridgeway, 850 Marie Street. Parcel 015391, place a culvert to enter property. Approved by planning, that was an FYI. Further FYI, permit 2024-06, digging and grading, yes.
Um, will Ferguson be inspecting that?
I'm sure he will.
In placement?
We will make sure of that. Uh, digging and grading, parcel 013913, pull-up concrete slab, approved by planning and zoning, FYI. Permit number 2024-07, demolition 440 Main. Parcel 013913, demo of concrete slab, approved planning and zoning, FYI. Permit 2024-08, residential building permit. Parcel 009210. Need a motion on that for discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion, please. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just looking out to see if there was any questions out in the.
I'm sorry. We did all those in favor, correct? I didn't hear everybody vote, I didn't either.
I understand, of course.
Okay. I vote aye, so motion carried. Need a motion for approval to issue new address for parcel 009210. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So I have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Motion for approval to issue new address to Park Track 2.
Make that motion?
Do I have a second?
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Permit number 2024-09, Ferguson informational permit.
Please move that to executive session, please.
All those in favor?
Just a request. Let me discuss it there.
Do we need to do that, Mitch?
Wait a minute, this is on a permit application?
There's more to it than just the permit, though.
It's a temporary permit. It will be.
Does it meet one of the criteria for executive session?
Not my estimation, but that's just me.
How it was applied and the personnel involvement, I don't care if we want to discuss it.
Is it?
It's what? It's what?
It's a temporary permit, it could be both.
It's temporarily.
Let's move it to executive session.
If it meets the criteria, I don't know that yet, so.
Okay, all those in favor moving to executive session?
If it's brought up in executive session and it doesn't meet the criteria, we stop the discussion.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
No motion needed.
No motion needed, okay.
Just your approval and the rest, let's move it.
Not necessarily, but whatever. Law enforcement abatments and complaints. Marshall report, sir.
If you want to remove all items out of P and Z then, except for G.
So remove?
Yep.
I would do that.
Except for G? Did you say except for G, Dan?
What do you want to remove now?
Thank you. Well, we might have to, we might have to put that one back on, depending on what Mitch decides in executive session. So my suggestion would be to remove A through F.
And I did have my hand up, Donna.
I know, but.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a feeling that you are the one running the meeting, not Vicky. And Vicky is the president.
That part of that's my fault, because it's, there is so much here and I've digested so much in the last week and a half that I'm not up to top speed on this, the way this is supposed to be run as far as parliamentary procedure. However, you are correct in some respects. Okay, you do have the marshals, you have a Custer County log. No, we're not there.
I don't think we had a vote on that.
Okay, all those in favor, moving to executive session?
No, removing A through F.
A through F. Yes, ma'am, did you have your hand up or you're just doing your hair?
No, I scratched my head.
Okay. Remove A through F, but not G? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote, Donna?
Yeah, it was a aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Okay. We're on nine, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Law enforcement abatments and complaints, marshals report.
Well, we've had a couple, you know, we have had a couple interviews, we've had people in, we've had three in fact. The one, Vic and I had the interview with him and it just isn't, I do not even know why he applied, because it's not feasible for where he lives, for where the town is. And so then we have had a lot, lot of discussion, we talked. Gail and I have visited about the budget.
Let's go into executive session.
Huh?
Let's go into executive session.
The marshal report?
The law enforcement personnel.
No. Personnel?
Was it?
Yeah. Why? For discussion.
Go for it.
What?
It's, it's not, it wasn't moved, so it's, go for it, discuss it, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I did interrupt you, but, um, I thought, I thought it had been moved, so I apologize, so.
If I missed it, I apologized, um.
So. Go for it.
Dan?
Um, once again, I thought by per suggestion of the finance officer that we're good with it, we just move it into executive session with the others and the personnel.
I don't.
Which I don't.
Go ahead. It's my fault, I can't.
No, it isn't. So.
This is just a train wreck from the last two, three meetings, so. Trying to play catch up and not sure how to do that.
Law enforcement personnel. It's not actually.
But it's not on.
It's under marshals report, so, but it's a personnel issue.
Is that what it was intended to be?
It was.
Okay, well, okay, we'll move it, that item didn't matter to me, but I do want to make one comment. On the Custer County Sheriff's Department, I did see them driving the town on Sat, or Sunday, rather. Uh, they were in town, driving the town, so.
Good.
One plus.
Okay, I'm not sure where we are.
I know we're, we're going to Custer County Log, am I correct?
Well, Custer County Log was in the packet for everybody's review.
Abatments, approval to abate property, prairie dogs, certain further.
Should be removed.
Okay, we need a motion to remove.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Complaint on feral cats was moved to item 14. Properties and dumpster, Donna? The one item was moved to exec session.
Then I don't have, I don't have, other than, well, I guess I do have something.
Go ahead.
I think we need to get our how the new people, I know there's one down in, just right by Ferguson, in Ferguson Development down there that does have Kiefer, and I know there is one over on Fairground Place that has Kiefer. I don't know how to add, how we should address these people. If they're getting water and sewer from the town, do they not get the garbage? Should they not have to get the garbage from the town? Garbage man.
It's an ordinance.
Do they live here in the city limits?
Well, yeah, well, I.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know for sure if the one, it's the one down on the end of McDermott Street.
Oh?
No.
They're not in the city limits?
No.
Not even with it? But even if they're in the mile radius?
That's police jurisdiction, that's for.
Okay, well, that's, I want that to. Yeah, and then, so then the other ones will run Fairgrounds Place, so that doesn't.
It's a little different with water and sewer, we can go 10 miles out of town for that service, garbage is not something you can.
But then if somebody in the town, no, if somebody pays for water and garbage from the town, how do I want to say that? I'm trying to think, my mind went blank how I wanted to say that. Are they, they are able to use the town dumpster, as long as they pay for garbage? From, through our bill, I mean, through our billing?
Isn't that the new?
That's back and forth and forth and back.
Isn't that the new?
Yes, it is. So they can use the town dumpster.
Well, there's a new ordinance here or something, I thought.
Right. That's in, that's in 14?
Second reading.
Well, I should have done my homework, number 14. So we can discuss it then.
Okay.
Dan?
14A, yeah.
No, I was going to say, the way the ordinance reads now, no, they are not allowed to, anybody out of town.
Right.
Correct. But the ordinance is.
Correct.
And if they are using it, then it would be billed.
Okay. Anything further on dumpsters and properties?
Nope, screws my.
Legal, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. You guys have no idea what's going on here. Engineer expense reimbursement, I'm not clear on what that even is for. Yes, ma'am?
That has been on the agenda since before I came back, so I, I never have an explanation either. I think it should be removed.
I would entertain a motion to remove.
That's coming up.
But that's what it was.
That's what it was?
What is?
Oh, so then we have it duplicated on the agenda then?
Correct.
Okay, so it's.
So it's.
It is.
Okay, so that's under executive session, so it can be removed, correct?
Right.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to remove that.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion fails. Dan?
We're not sure what we'll end up with, that's why I wouldn't want to move it yet. Thank you.
Legal action 120, Second Street Ordinance Violation. Requesting a letter from Mr. Johnson directing 120 Second Street due to violation of town ordinance to move commercial dumpster to commercial property and have a city issued tote placed at 120 Second Street.
Just Dan's stuff?
Yes, billed at the normal rate with water, sewer and building.
I looked at that and I'll tell you, here's my, I'll do the letter, that's fine. Um, because I reviewed this and I also reviewed former border trustee President Stiles's letter to the Halsworths.
Okay.
Insisting the removal of the Sander sanitation dumpster from the residence, I've also reviewed Hermosa ordinance, Chapter 52, and the Sander sanitation contract with Hermosa, it is clear to me that based upon a fair reading of Hermosa Chapter 52 and the Sander sanitation contract, that only 96 gallon containers are permitted on residential properties. And moreover, the only time Sander sanitation can provide in dumpsters, that being, I believe, the 30 yard dumpsters, is during the spring and fall cleanup times or at such other times as needed, with at least one day notice provided to the town at the rate of, at that time, it was $250 per pole or something. So my conclusion is, is that the Mr. Halsworth and his wife need to remove the dumpster and utilize the 96 gallon containers that Sander sanitation provides, just as. and utilize the ninety-six gallon containers the Sander sanitation provides, just as all the other Hermosa residents require to use. And to add further teeth to your ordinance, you might want to just add that no dumpsters are allowed on residential property. So.
Thank you.
I don't know if I need to do the letter.
May I comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, before it wasn't, but that's my contention of it is, we have paid garbage service the whole time. The dumpster is paid for through our business, even though we're paying garbage service to the town. And with the circumstance, like I say, if we had a tote provided to us, we would be in compliance. And the dumpster, as far as our ordinance, doesn't say that you can't have a dumpster and only the yard waste, which is what you've made mention here of Mitch on that side of it. And then also, in that letter from Mr. Stiles, it also said that they're not acquiring the monies for the extra for the dumpster, but we have nothing in our fee schedule that would back that up either. And then in our ordinance, it says all residential garbage, meaning that all residents would have residential garbage also. So when you go through this ordinance and you read all residents of the town, you read here where it says, unless a request is submitted at Town Hall in the ordinance itself and in the requirements of that, and where we are on fifty-two oh two is the ordinance that I'm reading of, then there's no compliance in this ordinance at all. Be able to defend that. Of course, commercial properties can use a dumpster wherever they want to apply the commercial dumpster to, but my suggestion was going to be, you bring me a tote, I'm legal. We need to go into this ordinance and change it that if you're gonna have a dumpster in your yard, then it needs to be on a commercial property to clearly make it understandable. Otherwise, anybody in the town, if they want to pay for a dumpster with our server, what's the big deal? You know, and, and that's where I guess I don't understand here part of it.
My interpretation, under the, under the ordinance, and I agree with what you say, and I even just said, I just said that, to clean it up, just to make it perfectly clear, we don't allow dumpsters in residential property. But I'm just looking at fifty-two point oh two, all residences of the town in each family unit, single through four blocks, who are subject to this capture, shall be issued one collection container by the contracted service provider. Okay, one collection container. And then in the contract, which it also is, the residents are subject to the contract, the only containers they can provide for residential use is ninety-six gallon containers. That's how I got there.
Mitch, can I, if they have two, then they're in violation. And there are several places around town that have two totes. So are they in violation? Or can you have? Paying for the extra one. If they pay for the extra one.
Well, it says one.
Okay, that's what I want clarification on.
One collection container. That's what your ordinance says.
Donna, sorry, she was there first. Donna, did you have something? Well, I, yeah, I just think that the right thing would be that we get Dan's tote, he gets rid of his dumpster and all's. All's right with the world. And, but we need to, cause I know there are two, there are people in town that pay for two dumpsters. Two totes or dumpsters? I mean totes, totes, totes.
Well, if they get permission from the city, then that's okay.
Right.
That's also provided.
Because then it's going through the town as, as an extra fee on their water.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the case or not, but.
Linda? Well, that's what I was gonna say, is that when the town has offered them, or when they've come up and said, I have too much garbage for one toter, may I have another one, and they are paying for it, the town has agreed upon that. Right. Same with a few customers in town, a few residents in town that years passed have asked not to have a toter and not to have the bill because of the fact that they don't have that much garbage. That was allowed them too. But I also agree that we should rewrite, relook at, put that in a work session to go through the ordinance again. Dan?
Because there's presently six that aren't, that Jill looked up using our garbage service that are in-town residents. So I mean, there's too many.
Who's in our garbage service?
Correct. And that's.
Are they not using it because there's not, they're not inhabited?
Right, well, or they just have, yes, nobody living there presently, but that's where we need to have a clarification on that side of it too.
We probably do, because on, like on one of these people, they go south for the winter and we shut their garbage off. So another one goes to a ranch that they live on, so we shut their garbage off.
To me, it should be handled as mandatory water, I suppose. If everybody left out for winter, nobody would pay for a garbage contract that we get.
Right, but we only pay for what they pick up anyway. I mean.
Oh, really? They just keep track of that?
Yeah, yeah, we do. Right down to, we usually are maybe off one a month, maybe.
So what do they charge?
So they charge sixteen seventy-seven plus tax. We, we part, charge twenty dollars plus tax.
So we make like three bucks per tote?
Barely.
Per month?
I mean, because you have to remember that, that money that is extra there goes for the cleanup.
Oh.
So we really, I mean, we really don't, we're not making a profit on people's garbage.
Maybe it's not that critical. But to answer your question, it does provide that specifically in the ordinance, one collection container for garbage unless that request is submitted to Town Hall.
Okay. Last time.
Two, I don't know if you have, that's on the list of anybody that has submitted either, four more totes than the one, you know, that's why I say there's so much wording in here that.
Four more totes, what do you mean?
That they want two totes, as what Linda referenced. Have we any requests written down?
Well, actually, that's where this all started from, like about six weeks ago was the customer down the street wanted to have, wanted to pay for a dumpster, and then that's when it all started, because we said, no, you can't do that, but why don't you, you know, because actually it's way more expensive than getting two totes. And it is, it's in the ordinance that if you request another tote, it can, the town board can approve that.
Yeah.
But it's not a dumpster.
No.
Right.
It's just another tote. Tote, they can have two totes, but they can't have a dumpster.
Correct.
Yes ma'am? My suggestion is to put this on a work session. But in the meantime, do we need to follow the ordinance?
Move your dumpster.
Dan? I, I think we need to. Mitch, what did you say?
Meantime, move the dumpster.
And we gotta end this subject, Deb.
So, commercial property can have a dumpster?
Yes.
Okay, so I can move my dumpster, that's a two yard dumpster, to a piece of my commercial property?
Yep.
Yes.
That'll solve that problem and just get a town tote and it's over with.
We'll get you a tote.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I know you had a both of them.
No, we used one. At the point of this, we just said we have a dumpster, we're paying for it through our company, we'll pay our garbage service so that we're in compliance.
But it should be.
But they never provided a tote.
Okay.
And we're not asking for reimbursement for all that.
Have a work session, go to work.
At a further point in time, would you put on the work session list, garbage ordinance, totes versus dumpsters, please?
Fifty-two oh two.
Okay, items ten, C and D, aces, both pertaining to aces is an executive session. Item E is contract with Preston's, we would like to remove that, could I have a motion to that effect? I'll make the motion. I have a second.
I second it.
Okay, Dan, discussion?
What was the purpose of it in the beginning?
It's clearly stated in the contract and stuff. Where's it, it's in here.
What was it on the agenda for in the first place? Is that what you just asked?
Yeah.
So there's a.
I'd rather not get into it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right.
There, Mitch, for current, we're just.
You want to discuss it in the executive session, Kim, but the motion was just to get it out.
Thank you.
Can I have a vote? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Are we in public works?
We are.
Thank you. I have to, because I have checks reported. Public Works Committee Report, not so much. Streets, he has, Chuck Ha gave me a report earlier today, he is moving ahead with, he's got the coal patch for Ferguson Street, he's working on street signs for Fairgrounds Place, that part is done. He's moving ahead with his task list. Lights, he has two in stock, but three are out, he is more ordering more. The bolted tank interior floor is pending, open work orders are being addressed and worked on. Chuck Irvine predominantly is doing some of the work, Chuck Ferguson has not felt well, so he is limiting what Chuck Irvine can do. Item eleven E, approval to assess Ferguson subdivision for lift station expenses is pending. Yes ma'am?
Oh. Go ahead, I'm, I'm not a trustee.
Yes.
Some time ago, we made a motion on that, that if these occurrences, that if anything were in that was negligence on that lift station that we had to go in and clean out, it was going to be assessed to the area down there.
That is what we were going to discuss, he's got it pending because the invoice is not fully written yet for all the product he used and the amount of time, et cetera, so we'd like to address it at a later date, discuss assessing it to each homeowner down there. So that's why we want it left pending.
I didn't know that.
No?
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Three ninety Whitney speed limit sign, that is almost directly out of three nineties driveway. He has a big camper, big pickup, he wants to know if the sign could be moved further west towards Highway seventy-nine. There's nothing in there that really would affect it, I drove down there and looked at it. I'd like to entertain a motion to move the sign further west if you want to go look at it first and assess how many feet you want to move it, that's fine too. Linda? I think we can just approve it, I don't think we need a motion for it. And I, and I would, I would like to say I would approve that movement. Good, cause I looked at his mobile home today, or his camper today and went, holy smokes, how you ever got that backed in there, it's beyond me.
That's Steve's?
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, it could usually be.
Okay.
Okay, so put that on a task order?
Yes.
Okay.
Please. Second Street Bridge guard rail, Gail and I got to go to that, Gail took pictures of it. A lady slid into the very northwest corner on the east side and damaged the very end. The Custer County Sheriff's Department happened to be in the vicinity, I assume they wrote a, yes, a report. So we will get the report and find out what it will cost to repair it. Chuck Irvine at the time suggested one of the curved pieces, a bolt, there was three pieces, weren't there? Yes ma'am?
I have the traffic report.
Okay.
So I talked to, emailed Rich Sackor with DOT, he said that he, they don't repair those, and he, and Chuck Irvine actually said, it's going to need to be repaired, it's not gonna be able to be pulled out. Zach, Rich Sackor said that they go to Hilt and, Hilt Engineering, so we need to figure out if we assess this, these people, what we're gonna do here. Cause it, it's not gonna be able to be pulled out.
No, not at all. Dan?
That's who originally installed it too, is Hilt, so.
Have you, would you have time to go look at it and assess what you think?
Oh, I did already.
Okay.
I mean, all it needs is a spacer and a new bolt and the end piece, it's a pretty simple thing.
Pretty much what we came up with too.
Cause the post, thank goodness it was there, they would have went.
Oh, yeah.
All the way through.
It would have been a nasty accident.
That was, I don't, I don't know if Jill would give us the parts and we could just fix it ourselves. I mean, it's a bolt-on piece and a block, and Hilt usually has pieces, parts laying around.
Okay, we can make those calls. Yes ma'am? I was just gonna ask if, how Gail make those phone calls? Yeah. And get, find out if we need to pay for the parts or if they'll just give them to us.
Just call Hilt Engineering?
Yeah.
Okay. Dan, could you tell me again what you think? It's a spacer and what'd you say?
A bolt.
Bolt?
And end cap.
End cap, okay. All right.
Okay, pace, contract, discuss the territory. According to Chuck, he will schedule and discuss the footage. There are two manholes that need attention. He feels it's more than eight thousand feet, but he wants to talk to them, so at this point, I think we should leave that pending. Everybody in agreement?
Boy, you're just crushing me tonight, Vicki. I have all kinds of information.
I've only spent twelve hours doing this, and it's like, really?
To me, it should be where we should get scheduled before we don't get scheduled, and it gets late in the season.
Can I?
Yeah, please do.
So what happened was, is that we, we did, we approved it, couple meetings back.
Yeah.
And so, and what on their estimate was eight thousand linear, linear feet.
Right.
So then, we started wondering about, well, how much did that, did that impact over in the western part of the town? It did not. And so then also, they also said then, and, and their, their estimate for eight thousand linear feet with, you know, with a mobilization is twenty, just under, just over twenty-seven thousand dollars. So then I talked to her and she said, three years ago, they did ten thousand feet. And, and she, so that's two thousand already more, and she's kind of thinking that that western part might be, you know, she didn't really know, but you know, it was, could be six, six thou, six thousand more linear feet up, out there. So we have to figure out if, because if we do, then that doubles, that doubles that estimate. So we really have to figure out what we're gonna do about the territory, because we do have them on for coming in, in May.
Go back on.
So, in your previous invoice, on your eight thousand, because it was like two or three years ago when we did all of it, and it was twenty-seven then. I thought that was our biggest number, cause we used to be at sixteen when we did it all. And then we added that across the road, and that's when it took the jump to twenty-seven or twenty-six or twenty, whatever it was in that number. So that's why I felt.
She said, please see the attached map, and the areas that are colored are the areas we completed in twenty-twenty-two, and going back to our reports, reports, that was. that was over 10,000 feet. If you're wanting us to do this west side of town, that is quite a bit over 7,000 to 8,000 more feet. So please let us know if you'd like the whole town cleaned and CCTV. I don't think we have it in our budget to do the entire town. I take that back. We don't have it in our budget to do the entire town.
Should we put that on a work session to discuss?
Well.
And figure the actual footage? Dan?
I think we definitely want to keep them on May. Keep the old section of town going. Look into the other and then know where we're at with the other segment of it then.
Connie?
I guess my thought is with our old part of town, like Dan says, we've got so many trees and stuff and the root problems. Where on the other side of the highway, it's not like there's a lot of established trees to get into the line. So I'm not sure if it's really a problem yet.
It was just our main trunk line that time when we didn't realize it. We found that boot in that line and it's a miracle we didn't plug up and they checked the trunk only. And that's why I'm thinking that they had this crossover figured in on that. So if we at least look at that segment of it, I think we'd be okay in the rest of the development.
So just have it camered?
They gotta jet a camera as the bone.
Oh, yeah, true.
They won't stick the camera in. So if we see, you know, at the 10,000, I think just gave us that short little trunk of line coming through. So that's what we'll investigate and see if we can do at least the main trunk coming out and see exactly what's involved in that. That'll tell the rest of the story of that line over there. And what then may be expected in development. If they run into a lot of grease, debris, towels, anything else, then that's gonna say, whoa, we might have a problem coming down the line. If they don't, then good, we're good to go.
Anything else, Kim?
So we're not putting that on a work session right now because we need to move forward, correct?
At least with the old section.
Yeah.
Definitely, I feel. Don't you guys?
Well, yeah, we have to do the old section and we just have to get the numbers right, that's all. And do that.
Okay.
Been a long duty. Item 12, finance office.
Okay.
First one has been moved to executive session.
Correct.
Okay. Then you, please, Gail.
Okay, monthly financials are in the packet? I have a few things, so sorry, bear with me, everybody. I know it's getting late, but I do have a few things and a couple of them are minor, but we need to talk about them. I need to know who's gonna go to the District 9 meeting on March 27th because I have to get everybody registered.
Don't we have that under new business? I thought I put it under new business.
Yeah, you did.
So you and I are, you and I-
So this is district meeting.
Okay.
I'm going.
And it's on what date?
It's March 27th.
Where's it at?
Hill City.
No, no.
Hill City.
Specific.
Specific.
Usually at a restaurant or a coffee bar.
Specific, I haven't heard.
Last time it was at Prairie Berry, wasn't it?
I don't know. I didn't go last time.
I've never been.
I don't know. I don't have it. I don't have it.
Well, if it's a good place, I'm welcome.
I would like to go.
Penrickson?
Could you tell me what day it is?
It's March 27th.
A Wednesday?
Which is a Wednesday.
Free physical?
You'd like to?
Do you have to pay for tickets and stuff?
Yeah.
How much is it?
30.
I'll go.
I'll go.
I'll pay myself and my wife.
Okay.
And then if we take our spouses and we pay.
Yeah, you pay with them separately. Right?
Yep, that's what we've always done.
So just a little bit of advice or whatever, I'm not gonna go, so you guys can not worry about that I'm gonna win all the big prizes this year.
Why not?
Come on!
I won the big prizes, two of them. I wonder, I actually won $100. I wonder what I did with that gift card.
Well, you didn't share it.
And what time is this at?
It's 5:30.
Five for drinkers.
I'll be there.
Okay, can I go on?
Yeah.
Okay, so you and I probably should've talked a little bit because some of the stuff you added on, I already had. But equalization, please note that that's March 18th. And that's the Monday, that's the third Monday by statute. We have to have that. It's 6:00 PM. An equalization is asked for 6:00 PM.
I added it to these calendars, but I didn't add it on to the, I knew that, but I-
Election, pardon me?
Monday?
Monday, the third Monday in the month, 18th. We need to have a quorum for that.
And where's that at?
Here. Election petitions start circulating on this Friday and then the cutoff date is March 26th at 5:00 PM. June 22nd, as you all know, is the citywide room sale and the vendor fair. And we had a request from Bert, the librarian, asking Dan and Deb if you guys would agree to let them park down there. They want to do a book sale as well. And she said that she would make sure that she ropes off the grass to, she said she'd be willing to rope off grass area to ensure parking and gravel only.
Because they haven't been asking any other of the times. They've been having all of these-
As long as they stay off the grass, but I notice that whatever's going on down there, they're starting to get into the grass area.
On the Saturday things? I don't know what they're doing, but we-
Oh, on those Saturdays? She's got crafting days and, yeah.
They're all over.
So.
They just need to regulate.
Regulate the parking, okay.
And all their events or it's gonna ruin it.
Okay. Do you guys think you're okay with the book club day? Okay. All right. Vicky, I'm sorry. I think you added this onto the new agenda, or excuse, new business, but cleanup day? Can we talk about that now? So Sandra suggested, are we going to do the cleanup day?
That was the big question. We don't have volunteers. What day is cleanup day?
There's noise on the Saturday.
Well, I know that, but-
Well, they suggested April 20th.
We're gonna use our lot again. And we'll use our loader again. And we'll do it again.
Thank you, Dan.
So I'll have a job.
That would be awesome. Linda?
I was just gonna say that I think I can help. I don't have anything on right now. Possibly Lon can too.
I don't think they want you to help. You come home with more than you start off.
No. We've been very good. And that's at-
April 20th.
At 8:00 in the morning? Is that when it starts?
I guess, I didn't ask.
That's the citywide one, too?
Yeah, usually.
I said normally I meet the dumpster guy at 7:00 for placement. And then they'll call me Friday and line it up and let it go so we don't have them there Friday.
Okay, I'll confirm with them the date and then I'll get the exact time. I hadn't done that. Okay, now I have a biggie. It's TIF. I had a call today from the equalization office and I know, I know it's getting late, but this is really important to get this one off my plate. She's concerned that we're still collecting monies on the TIF when the TIF has been paid off. Dan, you're the guru on TIF and so I had to bring this to the board because I don't know what to-
Look, we haven't expired it yet.
Right. But she said if it's paid off, it's expired in her mind. She was gonna call the Department of Revenue, but I asked her to hold off on the Department of Revenue until we find out whether or not it really is expired. In her mind, it's expired because it's paid off.
Well, Kent Hague told us that even though sometimes you may pay them off, there's still operating expenses that you collect for administration sites and legal sites that may be involved in that. So I would recommend that we make a call to Kent Hague. Ask Kent to, are we back out of this so that we don't get ourselves in trouble? And that way then we know with the payoff with the administrative side of it. I know they always leave a cushion in there to be able to back out of it. And then we would be good to go until we do an overlay or start into anything else. And he said there was also times that you left some in there for your overlay and administrative to start up into another tip. So if we were gonna do another one for Preston and the overlay coming around, we'd want to have fundage there so we aren't bringing it out of our pockets. So them are questions that need to be asked. And at that point, you want me to come up and meet with you and talk and call and ask them questions? I'd be happy to help you.
Yeah, we need to do that quickly because she wants to get it off her plate. The Director of Equalization.
The head director was Sharon Rittenberger. Oh, for customers.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shannon's dependent.
My bad.
Okay, all right. So can, do we have approval to call Kent then to get these answered?
I'll make that motion if we need it.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll see what my tomorrow means and call you.
Okay, that'd be good, okay. That's my report.
Okay.
Oh, Dan has-
Yes, Dan.
On the financials, I like the detail. I mean, this new software, just like what Monica was doing, and I like what you girls are doing. And I want to compliment you on that because it is so much more clear. And then every one of the categories comes through and then when you look at your balance, at your bottoms, everything is projected outright. You check reconciliations. I like how them come through because it's clear. Before, we had so much question because we didn't know it. So I want to thank you for what you've done on this and how your clarity is. It really, does really well all the way across the board.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's a good program.
Okay. Old business. Item A, C, D were moved to the task list. N, E were moved to task list. So Custer, or Custer, Hermosa Connects, vendor fair permits, anything on that?
Oh. I had one more, I had one on finance officer, darn it. But the vendor permits. Okay, so what, I was not here last year, but you guys waived the vendor permit fees for the, for last year. So we need to figure out, and we need to do it quickly, whether or not we're going to waive those fees this year because they're already starting to get people to, you know, their vendors are already starting to register.
When this was represented in the very beginning and it was brought to, it was talked about to me, I said I'd bring it to the board, that our suggestion, or my suggestion, was waive it for the first year to get them off the ground. I don't know where you guys are with that, but I kind of feel like, you know, they need to pay for the permits. Not that I don't want to help them, but anybody else, Linda?
Anybody else would have to, any other city, any other fair organization, they pay for that. And, and it, I think that we should charge for that.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I would make that motion.
I second it.
And again, not to, nothing against Hermosa Connects. It's absolutely wonderful.
That's not what it's for.
It's absolutely wonderful what they put together last year and what they're doing this year.
Right, it was fabulous and they've got more people coming. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried.
Vicky, can we go back for a minute?
Yes, you can.
Sorry, you guys. Did you guys see that from Napoleon? Much like this? So I need to know if you guys want me to sign that or not?
Any discussion?
Just continuing?
Yeah, I looked through that. I would go ahead and sign it. It's just a modification to the fee agreement.
Do we need a motion?
For a structured settlement. Yeah, you just need the authority to discuss financials.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Dan? New business, correct, since we're crisscrossing there. Are we okay with new business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Second reading of Chapter 52, Garbage and Refuse, Ms. Gail.
I think she's got something.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we discussed earlier that we should go through it again. So I think we should just-
Then make the motion and table it.
Or take it out.
Take it off, throw it out, whatever, and start over.
I would make a motion to remove it off the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sir?
So are we going to rewrite this then?
Yes, readdress it.
We're gonna move it to a work session and rewrite it?
I think so, yes. That would be my suggestion.
If I may, before we vote then?
Okay, just one second, please. Sir?
So on it, with the present ordinance also, and looking at the old ordinance, I think in the work session, it will clarify why we did what we did, but PNC had come aboard at that time, so.
Work around it then, see what happens. All those in favor?
Basically, we cleaned it up.
Excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? I'm gonna go nay. Okay. Item 14, correct?
Mm-hmm.
West River Coalition Cat Care Group, and we also have the feral cat issue complaint to discuss. I would like to request Connie due to her report.
Well, I had a hard time trying to figure out how to write through port. I've been missing the last couple of meetings due to stuff, but I have listened to the recording. So I kind of wrote something I'd like to read if there's questions at the end. Maybe I can just read through this and go from there.
I would ask everybody referring from question.
I listened to the last recording and there was a lot of discussion on the cat population in the Folsom Gumbel Lily area. First off, this is a community problem and has been for many years. It is clear on the recording that certain people are putting blame on one citizen, yet this same colony has been there for many, many years and has never been brought up at a prior board meeting. Regardless of the finger pointing, it needs to stop and the problem needs to be addressed. When the funds were set aside in the budget last year, I decided then that I would help. Not because it was a glamorous job and not for the kudos of doing it. Trust me, the hours suck and the pay certainly didn't sway my decision to help. I first went to find volunteers. Linda Freed is an expert in this field. She and neighbor Doreen have had a TNR program for years on the Fairgrounds area. Their knowledge was very helpful and they agreed to help me. Working together with West River Coalition, we got our plans made and dates set. First off, this colony has been used to being fed cat food in 15 to 20 pound bags in a pile for many, many years. They came and went and randomly just ate. They were immediately cut down to one feeding a day at 5:00 PM. I fed them like that for approximately two weeks prior to the trapping. Over that period of time, this colony got to know the sound of my vehicle, the sound of my voice, and the sound of the food container. Every day, I did a head count and I learned quickly what each of these cats and kittens looked like. With this method of feeding, trapping was very quick. All traps triggered within minutes. Each were covered tightly and kept warm for the night. We have fixed 18 cats from the Folsom house. We have fixed 18 cats from the Folsom House. At a cost of $36.87 a cat. Total spent out of my pocket was roughly $664. Vet clinics nowadays charge between $150 and $250 per cat for a spay or a neuter. Citizens can get a cute kitten without knowing the future cost of these pets and then kick them outdoors when they can't afford to fix them. I truly do believe that the prior owner of the Folsom House did indeed rehome 35 of them. My daily head count was between 15 and 25 cats. According to the recording, a board member speaks of a concerned citizen and all of the cats of the trailer park. I know who he is speaking of. Initially, he was on board to have us do trapping in the trailer park. Myself and Linda walked through with him as he pointed out the problem areas. When he realized the cats weren't being hauled to the pound, he sadly backed out. The negative comments on the recording about us feeding the cats in the trailer park is misunderstood. We discussed with him about building a straw enclosure clear down around the northeast corner of the property away from the trailer houses and near open fields. There, they could hunt and stay away from the park. They would have been fed down there daily, then weaned down to a couple times a week. There is no doubt, the time and effort put into this, that we are dealing with three separate colonies. I am not saying that a couple don't go back and forth, but none of the trailer park cats that I have seen have I ever witnessed at the Folsom House. Some of the cats at the greenhouse also were never seen at the Folsom House. One in particular at the greenhouse has a pretty severe injury to its back leg and has never been seen leaving that property. Feral cats fight. They fight for food, they fight for shelter, territory, and mating rights. Once fixed, that all goes away. Once the hormone levels drop, they become a pride and actually will work together to keep other ferals out of the town. TNR programs work, period. Out of the 18 cats that we fixed, seven were females. Each female can have up to three letters per year with five to six kittens in an average litter. So one female can make 35 cats in a year. Times that by seven is 105 cats in a year. So having 18 to 25 fixed cats in town, helping to patrol our borders to keep other ferals out is helpful as well as having free pest control. So the complaining on the audio about the price of the citizens is ridiculous. Everyone we spoke with was all for this program. So out of the roughly $664 spent, that is a cost of $1.67 per citizen. Also on the recording, I heard a board member claim her love for the birds. I share in that love for birds as well. I feed them at feeders in my own backyard. I have been a member of the Audubon Society on and off for many years, since 1979, in different states and overseas. I love also watching the Great Horned Owls. We also have a pair of Cooper Hawk in our area. They are very stealthy hunters with the Hootie Doves being their favorite meal. They're called Eurasian Ring Doves, Collared Doves. They've been moving north for years and spreading like wildfire from the Caribbean. They are a special food source for the Great Horned Owls and the Cooper Hawks as they are slow and clumsy as well as an easy sitting target atop of telephone poles or under bird feeders. I see them taken down many times. The Coopers will take them to the shrubs where a pile of feathers is all that is left. I am not saying that the cats don't take some birds, but owls, hawks, and cats are predators in their nature. But all three will pick the slowest, clumsiest, wounded, or sickest target. The easiest is to capture, survival of the fittest. They don't kill for the fun of it, it's hunger, plain and simple. There's plenty of prey to go around between birds, rabbits, voles, moles, and mice. It balances out. In closing, I just want to state that we all need to do our part. Our shelters and our humane societies are full to the max. I would love to see these funds put aside every year for this project. I feel that we have approximately five more cats at the Folsom House to be trapped and fixed. Each left ear has the tip removed as identification that it has been altered and not able to be the future cause of problem litters. We have $336 left in this budget to do nine more cats. And some, we could do a few more because we've had some donation money from people. Perhaps the other two colony owners could get with West River Coalition and do their part in this community effort. These cats did not ask for this life. Many times in the recordings, I heard several of you say that we want to move forward in a positive manner. It is nice to see that tonight. And it's nice to see that being put into action.
Thank you, Connie. I appreciate all you've done because it does help. The other part is, you know, we need some of those cats around. Otherwise, rabbits chew up your cars, all kinds of stuff, and overpopulate going with the rabbit population. Anybody else have anything?
I think it's a good deal.
And that is paid for out of the budget that was already put into play for that particular issue.
That's correct.
Okay. You have a question? Yes.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Connie for all her hard work on that. That's just a lot of work.
Yes, it's a huge amount of work and you are truly appreciated.
There's a few scary slick mornings going to customers and vets as we have.
Did you put one?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you did or I did. Or if we both did.
Take it off, we're not ready.
We're not ready, okay.
I would like to thank Connie also. And, and I know you like the birds too, so.
Yeah, and anybody that wants to donate cat food, that kind of stuff, it's greatly appreciated. We had some extra dog houses and Connie's been getting those and making homes out of those. And, you know, we had some extra cat food from Terry bringing us some kittens. And so that went back to their cause.
It's been very nice, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'll have to thank you.
And when you get around to it, I'll help you at the other dog house. Okay? Donna?
I would think it would be maybe a nice gesture for her to throw a couple dollars in and give Connie gas money. I mean, she's doing this on her own for real, even though.
It's in, it's in the billing. I have to get reimbursed for my, for gas.
Okay.
But like not, it's not time, it's all volunteer time, but.
And you're, it's appreciated, yes.
And the cats appreciate it. They don't, they don't like fighting.
Yeah.
It'll stop the yelling.
I'm not a cat lover, but I don't like.
I'm not either, but I'm sorry.
I don't like seeing animals killed.
I wish we still had a cat up by my area because since we don't, since my neighbor was, we'll let that go. Anyway, without those cats, we now have mice. And I don't enjoy that at all. I'd rather feed a cat and have it in the vicinity, have it fixed and maintain it than have mice.
I knew you asked you to just try. Caught a hole in my flower bed right outside.
That's what you told me.
I have a cat in the store.
Good job, Caesar.
So you are truly appreciated and thank you so much. I hope you can get the rest of them caught before another shipment comes in.
Yeah, he was booked up until after the 15th of March and so I.
It's a tremendous program, very helpful. Especially when you take a good look at the area of this town because it's surrounded by fields everywhere you look.
Ideally, it would be nice to have a small colony of four on just about every side of town. And they will keep the ferals from coming in.
Super. Thank you again, truly appreciated. Okay, what else do we have?
You want your Tower, Gravelon Tower?
Oh, that's right. Gravelon Tower Road. That's in an agreement, contract, is it not?
Dan, I said have that on the agenda.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I marked it up there, top to way. And just what we need to do is basically dig the soil off and put three to four loads of rock up there and have it completed. Anybody wants to go up and look at the white lines? I don't have a problem doing it, but I would put a number together to do it.
Does that mean that you, you get the gravel and you bring it in and spread it and everything then? Is that what?
I would, yeah. Have Miller haul it in like we normally do and.
Well, I think maybe it should go out for bids then.
Yep.
Go.
Let's bid it out.
That was my thought.
Okay. That we will put on the next agenda to be bid out.
Bid, okay.
Okay. Item H, discussion of number, reduction in number of newsletter copies. Was a suggestion made to reduce the number by 25 because there seemed to be several, I did not count them, but there was a report of about 20, 25 left over. I can't verify that. Joan?
The only thing I have to say about is that there were a couple places I didn't deliver to at the beginning of the month, which I normally would, like Lenses, they set them out for their customers to look at all the rating and whatnot. And I was sick, so there was a couple places I didn't go. I threw them all in the box down at drops. However, I also saw there was some left when I left yesterday. And I would, I would say that wait one more month to decide since they're already printed this month, let's see where we're at.
I can live with that. Anybody else?
I'm gonna find it out.
So we'll table this for a month. Anything else?
Can I volunteer, what you moved?
No, we're gonna, we're not quite ready for that.
Well, you, so she's.
Pending?
Yeah.
She put it on, but we're gonna put it to pending, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Volunteer of the year. Good.
Okay. Items from citizens. No action will be taken by the board on any issue related without first being placed on a future agenda by the board to allow the public notice. Reserved time for public comment is 15 minutes. Meeting of the Board of Trustees are open to the public. The audience will be allowed to comment on specific agenda items during the time allotted on the agenda items according to established procedure of the board. This is a time for members of the public, citizens, business owners, and those living with one, within the one mile radius of town limits to express concerns and discuss issues having relevance to the town. Anyone wishing to address the board during this time shall be asked to stand, identify themselves after being required by the President of the Board. I would also ask that the Board of Trustees refrain from any comment while people are speaking and after. Deb?
I just have one question.
Yes.
The thing up, you said April 20th? Do we have like another date just in case it's blizzard?
I can ask him.
I mean.
Good, good idea.
Yeah.
Because it is, because we don't normally do it until, when's we normally? When does Rapid do their thing?
It's about that. I think, I think it's actually that, yeah. Rapid do their thing.
I think I see anything for it.
That's okay, I'll just have Lon bring his, um, label.
Do we wanna try for the 27th then?
As an alternate date.
I think they should.
As an alternate date, is that what you're saying, Deb?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be still the same timeframe, won't it? Is it most often usually like for like a week?
Oh, and Rapid?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, yes.
They do, yeah.
So it's not that Saturday.
ours is just that Saturday, so, yeah. That'd give us an alternative.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any citizen input? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to add a little bit to the cat situation. And the reason I mentioned the other two property owners are is we do not have permission to go on those properties to trap. The cats in the trailer park are being fed there. There's moles and everything sitting right out on decks. So, and they're all right there. But we don't have permission to put traps on the trailer park.
Thank you.
Or in the greenhouse.
I was just wondering where those two places were. Was it Trailer Court, Connie?
In the trailer park.
In the tur, okay. So if Arlo says it's okay over there, can you?
At his house?
Yeah. It's not the Trailer Court's property, that's our property, so.
Yes, as long as we have permission to do so.
Yeah, because he's got some that are probably underneath the skirting and.
Yeah, and I know that there was mention of the cats using the bathroom with the trailers. There is a lot of trailers over there that do need some help with the skirting.
I am, yeah.
And, and the thing is, it's warmer underneath the trailer than it is in the wintertime. They're probably under for survival, but.
It could give you permission to go ahead and do it if I'll find out from him if they're still going underneath there and then set it up.
Yeah. Then you said greenhouse, ours over here too.
Excuse me. She's supposed to be doing input.
Sorry.
We're not supposed to be talking.
Thank you.
Deb, thank you.
Is it the greenhouse too, Connie?
Yes.
Okay, but you have permission over there too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Like I said, we've only got the nine more cats that are covered under the, under the $1,000, but.
If anybody wants to donate, you can pay, what is it, $7 for rabies?
$7 for rabies, which I did speak with the town office before we went ahead and made that decision. I felt it was important as well as the town felt it was, well. And us handling it, it's, it's, you have some big gloves, I guess some sharp teeth. So I mean, there's, you're at risk yourself of getting bit, you know, so.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Trina Malini. I'm afraid from standing, but I just wanna say it was a very nice meeting today.
Thank you. Sorry it was a little confusing, but.
It was very confusing.
Yeah, well, in between, I've been to the emergency room three times. So I'm, I'm really doing good to be here, you know? So, and, and I spent yesterday and all of today trying to get this put together. And so it was kind of a hodgepodge and I apologize. It will get better, hopefully. And we'll go from there, okay? Thank you. Lon?
I was just gonna say if you get the gargoyle parts out of a volunteer upper thing.
That's very nice, thank you. Okay?
Thanks, Lon.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay.
We will move to executive session if I have a motion.
I will make a motion to move into executive session at 8:00. Well, mine says 8:04. 8:08, legal.
Personnel.
Personnel.
And contract.
And contracts, all three, basically, yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Will somebody give you a donation?
Oh, thank you.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Arlo knows about how things have passed.
Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion during executive session that all cell phones are put on the counter and everybody make sure they're.
9:03 or 9:04.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, we come out of executive section at 9:03.
Second.
Okay.
Vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion that there be a letter of reprimand for Mr. Halsworth to go on his file for inappropriate behavior.
I make that motion.
No, you'd second it.
And I also would like to make a motion, oh, yeah.
No, discussion, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No, it doesn't.
No, 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 that's right, you're right.
Four person board.
Four person board. Oh, you have one again, Dan.
No, no, there is, there is. I thought there was another motion.
There was.
What was it?
To Mr. Stiles.
For Mr. Stiles.
Were you there or did you abstain?
It was for Stiles and Halsworth.
Yes, so, something does.
Okay. I'll make a motion for Stiles and.
Wasn't that right?
Do I have a second?
For both?
For both.
For both. For trustee Stiles, former trustee Stiles and trustee Halsworth, a letter of reprimand, was it?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Failed. Okay, end of subject, I make a motion adjourn.
Wasn't there another motion?
At nine oh six, I don't.
That needed to be for a letter?
No, I voted for you.
Why, I thought for races.
No, we were going into research on that.
Research.
Motion at nine oh six to adjourn.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I just did.
Oh, sorry. I'll second it then.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this yours? Yep.
There was one here, which was, how to light up your.